He was at the conference, so we got to talk in the hall. What he suggested at the conference, just I'll add two cents, was this original from 2012? Okay.
We're not, please, we're not discussing, we're not meeting, we're not in meeting yet.
What?
We're not in meeting yet.
Discussing what?
Anything, we're not in meeting. Let's go into the meeting.
They bring the meeting to order.
Okay.
Prove agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
Move second to approve agenda, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, citizen's opportunity to address the council. Anyone to be heard?
Can I actually say something really fast?
Sure.
Unrelated, it's not, more like, just, um, I've mentioned this, I think, in a couple of other meetings in different communities since I'm here. You might know that things are difficult for newspapers right now, you know, like, we, we all struggle. And one of the things, I'm just kind of asking people in towns, if you see an ad in the paper and then you go to that event, will you let the people know you saw their ad in the paper? Um, we just were trying to remind people that what's in the paper, like, people do see it and act on it. You know, I'm not asking you guys for to buy more ad, I mean, if anyone wants to buy more ads, we'll take them. But I, I mean, I know, just as, as community members, and this is a place where I see community members, we're just kind of asking people that if you see a, something in the paper that gets you to do something, let whoever placed that advertisement know, just, you know, so that they know that it made a difference. Just, that's it, that's all, we're just, you know, trying to, to stay a part of the community. We are the, we just, we are the longest running business in the city of Pocahontas. Uh, we recently discovered, so, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay. Seeing no others?
Okay.
Okay. Send agenda. Approve the previous minutes. Approve bills, liquor license for the zone, liquor license for family dollar, liquor license for the golf course, and liquor license for Dollar General. Do those have to be approved individually?
Without, it can all be together, under consent.
I'll make the motion to approve the casino agenda and liquor license.
I'll second.
Move in second to approve the liquor licenses and bill and previous minutes, all in favor?
Aight.
Please, please sign off on your bills and pass them this way, just when you get there.
Okay, moving on, discuss the armory lease to Midwest A.
Okay, this is an eleven-page document, this is a draft from our legal team. I had a meeting at the airport today and Dr. Doll is gonna come in tomorrow and fine tune it. I hope you guys got to look at it over the weekend. There's a few little words he's worried about. Um, this would be a five-year lease. It'll cover the expense of the roof in five years, and then we will see where we go from there. If they want to purchase it or continue to lease it. They're ready to send me a check, they tried to send me a check today and I said, no, please wait. So... If you wanna pick through it, we actually, you know, maybe change some wording around before the next meeting, that's fine. I thought the wording was okay.
Uh, did you, did you sign up for the?
Two thousand.
Is that what it was?
Mm-hmm. The back garage is going to stay ours for the city, all our winter stuff will stay in there. We will do all the snow in the mowing out there, like we do now.
The city or the airport?
City. We do that back.
Yeah, the back area.
Yeah, and then we do the mowing for the armory section.
For the armory?
Yeah. Not all the way by the terminal and all that, they do that. You know what I mean, that first building is all theirs, and then we just do from the armory back. So, two thousand a month for five years, they pay all the utilities, whatever they want to do to the building. They cannot walk through it today, looks like a totally different building, you would never know it. All that black grime and boot is off all the walls, you'd never know that. So, looks good and smells good up there, finally. If you wanna table it to look at the wording, if you trust the legal, I didn't see anything that drew any red flags.
Dr. Doll's wanting to look at it?
Dr. Doll wants to look at it, he wants it to be, yeah. He's, he's okay with some of the words, but he doesn't want it to be real estate, he wants it to be personal property. Stuff like that right under the first where I asked there, because I guess that changes the taxes. But we won't get the taxes on, you know, the taxes are, don't change anything for us.
Right.
Exactly, so, some of what he wants to change isn't gonna have a whole lot of bearing on what we decide.
Reset this all up again, the order?
Yep. So it's up to you, I've got the resolution ready, if we're all okay to vote, as it is.
Wishes?
Wish to all vote on, we could get some income coming in.
Right.
Yeah, help cover what we got going out.
As far as wording, wording's fine, I mean, the way it is, it is.
Motion to approve the armory release, or lease to Midwest A?
For two thousand a month, I think, motion.
Now second.
Move in second to approve the armory lease for two dollars a month?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aight.
Close. Okay. Discuss drainage of private states.
Okay, this is a picture from ISG's thirty-eight-page document. So, this outside line is where Travis wants to, yeah, wants to dig down three to four feet and put a pipe that will go all the way down to Peterson's, which is that first big lot there on the other side of the sheds. They have hit something fifteen feet down that we think is abandoned pipe, but what will happen is this will help the drainage from the golf course bypass those houses and get to the street, to the pond. He said it's gonna be eighteen thousand to do it, those residents are asking if we will split it somehow with them. They've not come up with any dollars, I don't, I'm leaving that up to you.
Fifteen thousand to rent the whole thing?
Eighteen.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
It's not fifteen feet, they, they found the tile on the edge of lot number eight. That's us, that's the, that's the town, and it's about thirty-two inches deep.
Okay.
And Adams says when, Adams says when they dug Peterson's?
Yep, is when they dug it.
Their, uh...
Odings?
Their grinder.
Oh.
They, there's, there's a tile there that they hit and it drained the tile back into their hole that they dug because it's broke there somewhere. After, uh, you know, they dug up, and the, and the tile was full, so.
It was broke previously.
So, yeah, so it's not draining, the tile was full.
That's why six was flooded even worse than usually.
Adams, Adams says instead of trying to go find all the broken tiles, he just thinks we should just put a bigger, new?
Tile.
Tile in, 'cause the golf course thinks that their tile's broken somewhere too, 'cause theirs isn't draining. Draining, uh...
To the pond.
Hole number six there, they got some intakes, whatever. Adams just says, instead of going to fixing.
If we split it between all of us, if it comes in at eighteen thousand, it's roughly, what, three thousand apiece?
Is that included in the golf course?
No.
So, is the golf course using this tile line?
That I...
Or will they continue one?
I haven't talked to the golf course, so I don't know.
I'd assume they're gonna wanna hook onto it.
But once you put a tile in, you can't restrict somebody from hooking up to it.
Look, I mean, if it's draining theirs too, shouldn't we be looking at splitting it with them too? Is what I'm asking.
I mean, I can, I can ask them if they want.
They were, they were talking about the golf course being part of it, Mike Peterson said.
I don't know who all they've talked to, so, yeah, maybe they've talked to the golf course.
Makes sense, 'cause he was talking six, six lots, five lots plus the golf course.
So if you buy that, it's three thousand.
Sir?
Yeah?
Behind our house, which is the middle line of the hole, they dug a tile there and then yesterday, and there's a tile there coming across and smashed.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one they dug up, that's thirty inches deep and it's filled, it's full.
Okay.
Full of dirt or full of water?
Uh, full of dirt.
Good.
So I can check with the...
But I'm assuming, I'm assuming, uh, the golf course intakes are about straight east of lot nine, so there must be another tile in there too that's probably broke, you know, but it's only thirty inches deep.
Yeah, exactly.
They would have, they would have had it, we hit them.
Yeah.
That was, I think that was only about a foot and a half deep at that.
Yeah.
One on six.
I mean, I don't need, yeah.
I thought that all went east.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't.
I think there's part that goes east and then there's part that goes west.
West.
Yeah. So it's up to you, I can talk to the golf course and see what they wanna do, if they're willing to split it as a six, as six of us?
Mike, Mike was talking, you know, the homeowners of the golf course, each paid two thousand. That'd be six, six thousand left.
Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve.
Six, six times two thousand is?
Twelve.
Twelve, so that leaves six thousand left.
Do you wanna confirm that for me, or do we just wanna?
They were just saying if we would pay a dollar amount.
Okay. Do we wanna pay the six and just take care of it, or?
I'd say it's more like the three.
So, everyone of them, every one of them?
Is gonna pitch in and pay shows.
So this?
Agreed to that, so?
This is assessing then all the?
The lots along?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it's fine.
Well, actually, if the golf course, that would make seven, count the six.
True, but divide eighteen by seven, probably.
They're only five lots.
No, there's six.
No, there's five, but then we would be six, the city and the golf course would be seven.
One, two, three, four, five, golf course is, golf course is six and we're seven.
Yeah, so divide eighteen by seven and we can pay whatever that is.
So if there are broken tiles, what are, what are the engineer, are they supposed to, the company supposed to go back and fix them?
Well, they should, but they're not gonna, they already got their money, they can't come back.
So then who's?
And they went to...
So then who's responsible to fix those then, now?
Well, they were supposed to, like I said.
But if they don't, are, is the city responsible to fix them?
We pay the lock for those lots.
That's neat. What are we gonna have in fixing the tiles that are broken? Say, that tile that they dug up, and if there's any more? We'll have more than three thousand?
Probably. Who, I don't remember, who was the contractor that did that?
I looked up their name, I can't, John, T, something.
I think we had to check with them.
Say, uh, you know, the tiles are broken, or you broke the tile.
But they're already saying they didn't.
Yeah, they're already saying they didn't see anything.
Wow.
Did they have to put up a performance bond?
I think so, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at the paperwork, I don't know.
But I'm sure we've already, that's already gone.
I don't know, I mean, yeah, the only...
So this, excuse me if I'm interrupting anything else, but, so this is basically a drainage tile. We're not hooking into any individual tiles, are we, they're coming off of the lots here.
As of right now, they would hook into the golf course, and anything else that they would find.
They would hook into it.
How many of the tiles?
Fifteen inch.
No, it's not.
That's what Adam said.
Fifteen inch?
No.
No, I think it's eight.
Maybe fifteen?
They can say they caught it.
No, he, I asked him, that's why I wrote it down there.
Yeah, I think they're eight.
That's what Adam came and told me that morning, so I don't know. It runs about twenty-five hundred apiece if we put a dent in it.
We should probably get a hold of that company and say, we'll send you a help, six thousand bucks and we'll fix it, or you can come back and fix it yourself.
Okay. I can do that? So we'll table it until we hear back?
Then that would be our third.
Yeah.
'Cause I'm assuming they're gonna want tile there anyway.
Oh, sure, to keep that drainage stood up.
Well, it fills north.
Okay.
We're just treating this basically as a fuel tile, then. A straight line here, a straight line, just basically, where's the, the line, it fills it up and drains it out.
So we'll table it till now, till I can...
As long as that tile's gonna be big enough that you can tie into it.
I don't know how many gallons an eight-inch tile carries. You know, I have, I have to tie them in too.
Depends on if you're on the top end or the bottom.
Okay.
So your wishes then, or what?
I think we need to table it, we need to talk to Adam too.
Yeah.
As far as tile size and...
Yeah.
I can add.
Get a clear explanation of actually what's happening.
That's fine, maybe I can get him to commit a meeting.
You want to just give him a call right now?
We need to get a hold of him.
I suppose we try.
See if he can explain it to us, so...
How deep would they have to go?
I haven't, I suppose it all depends on the fall, it's how deep you're gonna have to go.
'Cause I'm sure he's gonna hook into another bolt to the north where the...
You busy?
Where that diagonal tile, from the pond.
You, we're in the city council meeting, you wanna try to explain to everybody what's going on? Well, we're trying to get explained what, what you're doing and why. Can I, can I put you on speakerphone? Okay. Okay.
All right, so, basically what's going on out there is the tile coming out of the golf course is completely crushed, smashed, whatever, it's junk. Uh, so we're looking at going back and tying into the city's new tile that runs from the creek up to the, uh, the pond back there.
And how, how big a tile are you talking about?
Um, so we were gonna hook in at, on the city's tile there, we were gonna hook into that with a fifteen inch and bring that towards the golf course and then turn and go south, uh, probably a couple hundred feet up to where the intakes are at the golf course. And then once we got to that point, we would basically reduce down and continue that out all the way to the south to Larry Peters' property.
What size?
Do those intakes at the golf course, do those run towards?
Um, I have been told that the west one runs west and the east one goes east, that's what I've been told, so... That's, that's all I've got for you on that.
And you know if those are, the one that goes west is damaged or broke?
That, that's the one that we dug up on Saturday, um, that's, that's the one that I sent you pictures of.
That's the one that's going down to Peterson's, is it fifteen inch?
What do you reduce it down to, Adam?
Um, so probably once we get up there to that point, um, where we reduce, we'll probably just take an eight inch behind them on the two houses there, so, yeah. Um, the reason why we're taking the fifteen up is because the golf, golf course has expressed interest in the past of getting something run up there, and they would like to be able to take it farther than just to that intake. They would like to go pretty much all the way across to Fairway One with, with the new tile. So, I figured if we, we just will take something up there large enough to handle the amount of water that's gonna be flowing in, you know, and then everybody along there puts their house drains in, you know, their, their house pots into it, we'll, we'll have adequate capacity there as well soon as they, so... Um, that also being the case, you know, with us taking a fifteen up there to towards the golf course and then when we turn to go, uh, south, for the next expansion, there would be potential for capacity there for houses further north to get tied onto that as well. So, I mean, it's, it's not just a deal where it's gonna benefit the five houses that are there now, four or five houses, so...
How big is that tile that goes to the creek from the pond, you know, Adam?
Um... Huh, I don't remember, I know it says in the Asgore plans that the city has, that I got from Laura here a week ago, it says I'm, I'm there, but I don't have those with me, so... I was thinking it was an eighteen or a twenty-four maybe?
All right, sir.
Oh.
How much would it cost to fix that tile that's broken?
Uh, a lot. Well, the one, we don't know where it stops being quote, and, um, where we had it dug up there, we were up two and a half feet in the ground, but the ground level goes up drastically past that. Um, and it's right underneath Schneider's garage. So you would have to reroute it around that, and like I said, who knows where it's all screwed up at? Um, it could be twelve feet away, it could be three hundred feet away, I don't know.
Any other question? Thank you, Adam.
All right, thank you.
So do we know anymore than we did? We don't know what size tile.
Let's see, we talk to the golf course and see if they wanna go in on it?
Okay.
Split it all down?
Especially since some of it's for adding on to the golf course.
Right.
Yeah, I think they should, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna benefit from it eventually, yeah. Okay.
So these five houses, they all agree to chip in too, do we know that?
According to Petersons.
Guys?
That's what Gene told me, did they, did Gene talk to you guys?
Can we confirm that with each one?
Yeah.
Probably needs to be done.
Yeah. I have all of them, yeah.
Do we need something signed, saying that they, we all, that the golf course, we all?
Get them signed, that these are the parties paying for...
Yeah, the sign law, that they agree to it?
Yeah.
If we decide that.
This is how we're splitting. Okay, so that'll be tabled, so we get that communication done.
How's that sound to you folks?
That okay?
Any, any input there?
Any input?
That drain is, well, useless.
That intake, south of our house, anything, what will happen to that, Andy, yeah? What?
It's, it's up high, so it's like, water would have to run up to it. We didn't even know it was there, 'cause on the map we bought, I forgot when we bought our house, it didn't even show it on there, and the grass was as tall, and, yeah, and when we started building this spring, then, yeah, it's...
Where's, where's this at?
It's south of our house.
Just south of your house?
There's an intake that, that them guys put in, that turns, an old one?
The city must have put it in or somebody, I don't know.
Or was it part of the new construction?
No, it's nothing we did.
No, no, I know that, but I meant when they developed the lots.
It must, I don't know, yeah.
Right, but...
Sign it all, a bunch of rock, this big rock, this spring. That's all, all that's been done.
So the water won't go uphill, I understand that, so it needs to be dug out around it.
Need to see what it is.
Yeah. Pardon?
We need, somebody needs to go out and see what it actually is.
Okay.
'Cause it's halfway between our lot and lot number seven. Uh, who was it, Adam, Adam had a flat finger show how it was.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Hold it, we'll, I can send somebody out and see what we need to do.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, moving on. Eddie? To bank account.
So we need a resolution for this, for two, one of the banks. Uh, we need to add Kyle in case I'm not around like this last week, because we had a CD renew and we needed a signature, so we took care of it, but it'd be easier if he's on the bank. He won't be signing the checks yet necessarily, but at least can help with the CDs.
Any problems, anybody on that?
Cause Brandy on the thing?
Yeah. Brandy was the only one, she didn't want me on it.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to put Kyle on, a second.
Move in second to add Kyle to the bank account. Paperwork, all in favor? Close? Prove Dean Rupp's demolition, one oh six, second end of Southwest.
I think this is where his son lived. And he still has a plastic truck, and it's gonna keep those sheds in the back. So he's having the electric move to the back garage, so they're no longer, are any hookups in that, under that ground.
So if he wants a thousand bucks?
This is Tiff money.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
So, what much, he, excuse me, he wants to keep?
He's gonna keep those garage and city back there.
With electricity?
Yes, yep, with electricity. The biggest one has a plastic truck.
Is that the normal mountain?
Yeah.
Dog production here and stuff, um...
Sheldon passes these out when he got some time.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Uh, I'll second.
Okay.
Move in second to...
Yeah.
I want to say there's a debate with Dean Rupp's. All in. All in.
Aight.
Close?
Same thing with Michael Hammond. Did you see the pictures, he took it down to the base, I guess.
What was sitting on there?
Whole house or garage or something, it wasn't...
It wasn't a house?
That's what I was just wondering. It was a house.
It was a house, but it was like the grandparents' house, it's like way back in the day.
It's like two rooms and a bathroom.
In a box.
Small, 'cause it had a whole... Had a water be in it, it had at one time.
Yeah.
People wanted to look at it.
He gonna tear the concrete out, or he's gonna build something new?
As far as I know, he's leaving the concrete, so probably...
He's gonna put a shed on it.
Yeah.
What's his name?
Right, you had cases.
Cases, yeah.
Cliffs old, oh, okay, no.
I'll make a motion if they want it down. A second.
Move the second to approve the Hammond, uh, debate.
Go ahead.
Favor.
Alright.
Close.
The next thing is just to let you know, this is something new from the industrial arts kids at the school. The ones that build our sheds, you know, we put it at daycare and we put out at the soccer fields. Danny Adams' name, or Denny, is going to have them cut out shaped pumpkins or whatever for Halloween. And then the kids are gonna go home and decorate, so we're gonna see them stuck all over the yards. And then there's gonna be a crew that goes around and votes, and there's gonna be a little competition within the city. So as long as everybody's okay with it, you just wanna make sure you guys knew, cause it's something new. To get the kids more, you know, involved in the little thing. Anybody opposed to doing that or letting that happen?
Alright. Discuss waste treatment project plans. The subcommittee?
You did your novel?
I got my novel.
I was afraid of that.
I haven't looked at it yet. That's gone all weekend, so, uh.
Yeah. He's wanting to set up a meeting Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, I told him a Friday's not gonna work for me unless it's in between things for this week. So I told him Monday or Tuesday and.
This week or next?
Next week. So.
And that's fine.
Yeah, and it'll give us time to look at those packets. He kinda went over everything, so it's just, till we dig through them and.
I seen there, he's got three of them, ISG, Feenstra and Kim and, uh, SEH.
Cause didn't we deal with ISG last time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've had Feenstra and Kim before too.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Anyway, there was a contact person in there on the SEH. Uh, I got a good friend, I, he, he might know him.
Okay.
So I'm gonna call him in the couple, next couple days and see.
I think they were in conference too, actually.
What's that?
They were at that conference.
The S?
SEH, yeah. So was Feenstra and ISG sponsored, nothing like that.
Yeah, well, ISG filled out enough. I just kinda was glancing through it, so I'll, I'll do a little.
Okay, I'll touch base with you towards the end of the week.
Okay, so you guys will give us an update on that as it moves along? Okay.
Okay.
And, so.
Almost done, uh, small packet, um, these are kind of the big ones though, I guess, for a lot of people when they talk about how do we clean up the city, so we'll go through these, of course, for Cody, you have, this is the tree section, so we'll talk about trees, so. We got trees in there, so, um, and to start off, when we talk about one forty-five, there's one forty-five and there's one fifty-three, the two chapters. This is for the absolute dangerous buildings, so like these are the ones that you go after for, they're just unsound, unsafe. It's completely different than, they've got trees growing out of the foundation and stuff like that, but you have to make sure you apply the code differently, because in the first one, and actually the mayor and I were talking about that just a little bit ago, is, you know, you, these are the ones that typically will go some, under some type of an inspection process. And I did think about somebody, I do know somebody that we could, if we needed to have an independent party come in and assess a house, yes, it costs the city, but it may be very well worth it to prove it in court. So I do actually have, I started thinking about it, I'm like, wait a second, I do have another guy. Um, and he, he's one that provides a lot of the town cleanups around us, but he is a certified building inspector, so. That would be what we would need as a city, if, you know, somebody wanted to take classes and stuff on it, I don't, you know, Al, the former chief, he was, you know, that's what he was good at, he knew that very well. So, um, but I do know somebody else that can, that can do it and actually doesn't contract it for a fee, so. Um, but that's really what one forty-five's about, um, and it talks to their very inadequacies, as you can see, most of them, um, most of them come in there basically saying abandoned, uh, very inadequate, but at the end of the day, it all comes to be, we can prove that it is unsafe, that somebody going into that structure may die or may get hurt by entering that, so. Um, talks about how to conduct the hearings, you're gonna see that it looks a lot like, still like your property maintenance, but this one is more of, if you're going to demolition, there's not really gonna be a, if it's unsafe. Chances are you're not gonna see it come back into a new state, you might, but not for sure. One forty-six, manufactured mobile homes, how those have to be dealt with, um, talks about because we have a mobile home park, how that goes, fire zones, downtown is considered a fire zone, just puts extra restrictions on uh, building and, um, changes and all that have to come through basically by special permit, so in the C two downtown and the zoning, basically all that really means. One fifty, building numbering, um, and especially, and again, this is one that, the building numbering map. Uh, Laura and I, we learned early on, and that's what the new phase, it started off, and the numbers for the houses were wrong. Uh, and I'm not blaming anybody, but that's where the reality of it is, and I don't know that I've ever seen a building numbering map. Map, map, and again, in a really good news article would be about the importance of, uh, about house numbers on houses, right? You know, I mean, again, we get paramedics in here, we may get firefighters that have just moved in, you know, we get all these folks, and even my law enforcement, I mean, when we're trying to find a house and we're getting to it, we have a ton of houses, to me it is absolutely, and I've seen cities do this, write people tickets for not numbering their house, I am not, repeat, not saying that. However, I don't think people realize how important just three little numbers you could go buy at Farm and Home, little reflective numbers, that you can put on your house, can make. Um, but it is in the code that you're required to have a house number on your house.
So where was the house numbering map?
I've never seen one, I've never found one.
Okay.
Um, we actually, now you can get lucky enough that you could print off from Google, they actually have online a house numbering map, and, and like you said, and it was very easy, is that like when we were talking about, uh, northeast seventh street, the one that runs north and south out there. Well, if you started at the golf course road and the Prairie Lake Estates, but then you have to shoot off of your northeast, or your fourth avenue northeast and your third avenue northeast, right? That's what sets your hundreds. You know, and then we have to figure out, well, where does the five hundred come through there?
Where, where the street would.
Right, exactly, and so then you have to think about that, is that maybe because of the pond out there, you'll never build out there, and that's great. But what happens if somebody does come in there, you know, it's a way to make those numbers fit, because initially those were all numbered as a hundred. Well, that means if we'd have gone south, which could happen, toward the highway, yeah, those have all been like negative fifteen and, you know, it would have just not worked itself out.
Is that, oh, is that, uh, taken to commercial buildings too, have to have a number, not just houses?
Everything, well, and everything should have a number on, and another, and this is where it gets to the, city numbers are supposed to be three digit, county numbers are supposed to be five digit, and I understand why some of that happened when they were setting up the E nine one one system, but that's also part of the problem, is that what lies inside the city limits and what doesn't lie outside the city. And it really just helps you figure out where you're at, right? Uh, but we have a house on the south end of town that has a city number, it is not a city house. It is actually in the county, so, but then I've got properties on the north side that it's, you know, four digit number or five digit numbers, excuse me, that are in the city limit, so, you know, I.
Just had a building permit for one.
There you go, see, yep, you know, and that's how I teach the officers to use Beacon, cause Beacon has the best, the purple line that denotes where you're sitting. And isn't it a huge deal responding to the call? No, it's just, who's responsible for it, right? I mean, you know.
It is on an annual call.
It is on an annual call, so, absolutely, so just so your guys are aware, um, that's there. Ah, trees and offensive vegetation.
Oh dear.
No need to say that.
Sorry for asking.
No, I know, I can't resist that, I have to have a little bit of fun, I know. You know, and this is the thing, and I don't know, I've never written a ticket for a, a cotton, somebody putting a cottonwood tree in, I've never done any of that stuff. I don't know that I would know, I would have to call conservation, obviously, and say, what's this tree, or use my phone, you can Google it, figure it out, but. For the most part, here again, and it talks about, um, what offensive vegetation is, where the parking is at, and then whose duty is it to trim the trees, and as I, I've said it a few times in the past, yeah, Iowa Supreme Court has really pushed back on cities saying, yeah, it's not necessarily your responsibility, but if you're not telling people they have to do it, it can become your responsibility real quick, so, um, this duty to trim trees, and then knowing what your, uh, uh, what the heights have to be, and, and, uh, again, knowing that, for instance, anybody who owns property along the state highway, it has to, or any street, it has to be fifteen feet from curb to curb, no tree can be under fifteen feet off the road surface, and I think we've got some things we need to look at, some yes, some no. I actually had, because of an accident, I had to go measure the damn trees, so.
I thought it was eighteen feet.
Fifteen.
On the state highway or at the city highway?
I believe it says fifteen.
Maybe the state highway, it's eighteen.
Fifteen, uh, the owner or agent abiding shall keep trees on overhanging streets trimmed so the branches are fifteen, it's fifteen on the.
State highways.
On the state highways too. Cause it's interesting, cause there, there's the one down there, and it's the one I think a lot of people actually want the tree gone at fourth avenue northwest. That one there's right on the, that one is getting danger close now, as you watch the semis passing underneath it, it's about to clip it, so. Um, but again, just simple, again, simple notices and stuff, I, you know.
Can you, uh, does it say, can you plant a tree like in between the road and the sidewalk?
Eh, planting restrictions, one fifty one oh two.
I was told we're not doing that anymore, but is it in here?
Yeah, one fifty one oh two, planting restrictions, and it talks about, uh, no tree shall be planted in any parking or street unless alignment, spacing, and then you can't put in those certain trees. Um, one thing you may is that you could also say that the city has, before anybody can plant a tree, they have to get approval to do that.
So right now, though, if I cut a tree down between the sidewalk and the curb, can I plant one back? The boss ain't one of those?
I would say yes.
I was.
Think you're. You're not supposed to cut down trees between the sidewalk and curb, is that what we?
Right, right, that's true, but can you, uh, we were told, can you plant one back? That's why I don't know.
Cause someone says we're not planting them back, but is that officially a rule, or is it just that someone said?
There is none, just goes, breathing through this, there is nothing that says that if one is cut, it has to be replaced, so.
But you can.
But you can replace it.
You, homeowner can plant a tree in the city's right of way.
Correct, as of this, right now, under the trees section.
Maybe that's something we might, we want to let.
We might wanna think about.
People keep planting trees to.
I don't know.
I know, Lawrence, that's why I was asking, you know, Lawrence, you cannot plant in the city right of way.
Yeah, so yeah, um, you know, so again, it talks about alignment on trees, planted in the street shall be planted in the parking midway between the outer line of the sidewalk, so you have to plant it between your curb line and your sidewalk. And then it talks about trees should be planted on line, on a line ten feet from the property line. So.
What's that, from?
From the neighbor's property.
Right.
Oh, from the neighbor's.
Okay, and then it talks about spacing nine feet width, which contains at least eighty-one square feet of exposed soil surface per tree, so you have to have at least eighty-one square feet around the trees, would I read that to be? So nine by nine, right?
Oh, I should math. So that, so that kinda comes to ask me where they were talking about, there wasn't enough room for all those trees in the cities right of way.
Right, and clearly some of that, I can think of some trees right now that, again.
Well, that Michael, that last, that last, uh,
Hammond?
Yes, he has a bunch of trees and he was wondering about, there's a bunch of trees in that, in the city's right of way, and he's wondering about if he can cut down some of them, cause there's.
Growing a lot, well, even if it go, cause again, when we talk about next week, or next meeting about the, the s- school stuff, even those trees there, where that parking was at, those, those three trees right there don't meet that. So.
Newly planted or?
Old, it tells her old.
Old, yeah.
Just kind of a thing.
But, but there is something in here that, if they're dead.
Right.
That the city can notify them.
If they're gonna cut down.
So once you get all our trees cut down.
Approve those, although they have that metal tree or whatever.
That's what we get.
And so, and it does talk on here, the city council shall inspect, so remember, the council shall inspect, I like that one, that might be something too, that probably not that the council does the inspection, but, um, I get what they're trying to say there, but again, it should be, you know, the city shall inspect, and the council shall act upon. Dead, diseased, damaged trees should be as the following, and then it talks about, there's two in cities and, and private property, but. Again, just things that people don't realize, um, we do have a couple, and that's one thing we still, I've got, we gotta get those, that, there's that shrub. There's two shrubs right at the corner of Northwest Fifth and Railroad, where it turns the corner there, there's two massive shrubs that are actually right, I mean, right on the corner, you can't see around them, so, um, those are two that I noticed. Otherwise, we're pretty good, that's probably the only one that I've had that have been really shrubby. They're just rough, so. Uh, one fifty-two, portable c- uh, storage container units, um, health permit subject. Again, defined as a large container designed for rental, released as temporary storage, in Iraq, we called them choose, containerized housing units, we lived in them, but here, they're not for that, obviously. Um, property maintenance, okay, so this goes to the other one, uh, actually Eric Idi, and I did confirm what he sent us is actually this. Okay, so it's already in our code section, what he said, so, uh, and there you can, we go into the concepts of blighted areas, vermin, what those mean, um, the person going in, the property maintenance official, which for the most part, you both obviously were danger, police department to do this stuff, and then it talks again, what are nuisances? And it talks about then the accessory structures, so if they have a garage falling in, protective treatments, so exterior surfaces, wood, whatever. As we start working through this, and obviously we're gonna be targeting, I mean, some of these may fall and are dangerous as well, but as we, as we start going through this, we're gonna, we'll take the worst of the worst first and start working our way up, um, to hit them all, not that we have hundreds of them, but uh, they do take some work, ones who do that. Talk about foundation walls, drainage, stairways, decks, porches and balconies shall be maintained, chimneys, uh, mud, dirt, gravel or other debris deposited on private and such to be a threat to public safety to cause obstruction or drainage issues. Um, this one also has a notice debate on discovery, well, but did you have to do it within five days? Most of those have been taken out a lot of city codes, whereas if it's, you know, if I complain for discovered, then you can do the enforcement. Talks about that there is an emergency procedure, uh, for that, um, obviously, I would not recommend doing emergency procedures unless it really is a serious emergency, because in some of these things or two, we're talking about having to do administrative search warrants. I think most people are pretty easy to deal with, but if we have to go into a house and it goes with dangerous, we have to write search warrants, and obviously that becomes a police function, you know. Um, we, we can teach people to do them, but they're called an administrative search warrant, so that we can have access because of these types of issues, so. One fifty-four, wind energy cons- concert, conversion systems, I knew it was conversion, um, please don't make me enforce wind energy, but I have no idea. I know good, it's a lot of good wind energy. Flood pain, plan, plane management, this is a straight from FEMA, this is the city ordinance, uh, you see that. Uh, one sixty-five is your zoning regulation, that shows your updates to your zoning book, um, I think one thing, and Laura and I explained, or actually, before Laura came on, um, Brandy, I believe, had done, and maybe before that, when we were talking about, or did Justin Yar- Yarkovich over in?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was, Laura was here, we, uh, talked about that, cause now there's actually a lot of cities that move their zoning ordinances back into their code ordinances, um, cause obviously it has to have its own section and updating, a lot of cities have not moved it back in, so it's one book, not two. Little easier to monitor and maintain, airport zoning regulations, again, I call the FAA. And that's it.
Is that all going through somewhere?
That's it. Well, this would be, uh, I'll go through, there'll be a couple that.
There's a few new ones that are.
Right, and then I'll. And we'll discuss those.
Solar.
Yep.
Can you discuss those and then what's the next step?
Well, that's it, and then everybody just needs to let me know, what, what do we wanna do, I mean, I, so the e-bikes up, so as I was preparing the e-bikes thing, that, then that's been an interesting thing, as I've been watching some new, um, city code changes around the state of the Iowa, the state of Iowa has that's developing on how to deal with e-bikes, e-scooters and stuff, we aren't having the problems as serious as we were before. Uh, most have gotten a very good message out of that about the operation, and just making sure your kids are doing the right thing, I mean, you know, and licensing and whatnot. So, not to say we won't do something, but there's been some tweaks to, uh, how some cities have handled, and I think there's some good things to look at. Um, so we'll look at that, um, um, we've talked about, we need. We've talked about, we need to sit down and do, and that'll be a Laura and I, and the garbage guys probably, is talk about the recycling and the garbage procedures, and that's city ordinance. Um, there's a couple others, as far as, there's a couple changes to the junk ordinance for junk vehicles to do. I was, uh, the property maintenance guy I was thinking of, that does it professionally, he does his own city code enforcement stuff. Um, he actually sent me, then there's a whole federal code that goes along with that. And it makes it, it's, it piece that up a little bit, so you don't have the problems for people who have abandoned and junk cars on the road.
Library, you got that, that they voted on. One less person on the board, and, and then one person that I have. And then the hospital, so that one too, that they, or don't, don't have to be a-
Resident.
City resident.
Yeah, they don't have to live in town.
Okay, so we'll just then make change.
I know the library's in there, but I'll check the hospital.
Okay.
Is there any restriction where they can't get?
It used to be you have to be a bona, a bona fide citizen of Okeechobee to be on the board. And they changed, and they changed that.
Bona fide, that's always an interesting.
And, and some of the other boards are that way too, they say so many in town, one out of town.
It's all our service area.
I was often w- wondering here, uh, if we had a tornado go through town.
Okay, this is starting to appear.
Oh, wow, yeah. That's a concern of mine. What the hell do I do in response to that? Are there manuals out, or are there guides? Is it emergency management? You?
Call me, and we will. So, what'll happen is, is that you will set up an incident command system, the fire chief, the ambulance person and I, and then you, as far as the city limit, and so, and this is to go for whoever wants to be mayor, you get a heavy burden on your back at this point. Um, because within, the mayor will direct, basically, you're not necessarily the incident commander, but you're monitoring those things and directing those resources. And it depends on what the nature of what's going on, but typically, your three public safety entities will take over. And then you're directing then all of the, also then, and with the city administrator directing all the emergency responses from the city, uh, whatever we have left for assets to do that. The mayor is responsible for doing, um, the, the request for the state of Iowa at the, the state level for assistance.
Is there a manual to that effect?
I can send you to some federal courses that would be good for you. The ICS course, incident command.
I want, I want.
I know.
Need some.
Yeah, incident command courses, I mean, they wouldn't be bad, and honestly, they do actually make an ICS for, uh, city councils.
They're talking about having a book, that you can say, okay, this is step one, two, three, right? Not a book. Well, in writing, I mean. Yes, yeah.
We can find something.
Mercy preparedness.
That'd be something.
We have that, at the hospital. Yeah, well, I-
Well, and there is, the county, the county-
You might know, but the newer might not know, and-
Yeah, the county. So the county actually has a plan, and about every ten years, do you remember, FEMA comes in, and then they send them around to all the communities, and then they go over this, and then the, the county has a book, so then that comes under emergency management. And that's really who's gonna, you're gonna be feeding you your pieces, and so.
Well, I come from the Greenfield area, and it just pops up on me, what the hell would I do? I just agree with this. Cause I really don't know.
Spencer after the bugs.
Yeah, Spencer after the bugs, about that. That's a fun story, again.
Just talking about the houses, they're just talking about condemning houses, they're probably start tearing down.
Yeah, it, it, it's, yeah. Again, you, you've never known pain until you have, and you just feel for those communities once, you know, don't you? Cause it's not good, it's not easy. Um, but Spencer was very interesting, so I've actually sat through some of their discussions on how they did that, and how they responded, and how that worked. They did amazing, and they actually planned it right, so, I mean, they did a good job. But they lost all communications within the first, like, fifteen, twenty minutes. They had no way. Cell phone tower went down, all this other stuff, and-
It's pretty catastrophic to me.
Yep. So, but yes, we can get you all sorts of, I mean, and then honestly, honestly, the council should take that. It's kinda like going through a class on the city code, right? I mean, they should, there should be some of these little things that just, just so we're aware where things are at. But there is an ICS, so, so you can, through FEMA, there is actually training courses for free for councils, and fire and ambulance, and, you know, it's good stuff. So, yes.
I can get you something.
I want an outline. I don't want a whole damn book.
We hit you a novel to read.
The biggest thing is just knowing-
Four-week classes.
Is the process.
Right.
And the process isn't, the process, it's not that the process is scary, it's the fact that you maybe asked some questions to make decisions on, that you never thought that you'd ever have to make decision on.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna be surprised.
I've had my own fair share of large trauma, so.
Okay, just one more, so.
We'll, whatever. Yeah.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Report.
Got some reports coming here.
Uh, I guess that always runs into me again, so, uh, real quick, so what are we doing with the black truck?
It is out, it is out of commission right now. It does not run.
Well, that's not what Justin told me. He just said he was gonna hand it back. Said it was coming back to the police department, is what he told me. And that's fine, I just need to know when I line up, because we've got, so all the parts are in for the new, to hand over, to, to transition over, so I have three for auction, um, or however the coun- I should say, however the council wants to dispose of the three old vehicles. But I just needed to know, because if the, I need to go see what the truck is doing then. I just didn't know if there was plans, I just wanted to make sure. Um, the transmission had always been a problem with the truck, it's been a problem with it since the beginning. Um, Jeff at Poki Sales says there was a fix to it. I explained that there was a fix to it. I said there was a fix to it. I don't know if that fix was done to it. It needs to have a solenoid, something worked on, a solenoid in the transmission, and that never got, ever was done. Um, but we never took it out of service till, so to take, when I took over as chief, we never took it down to Lake City, because it operated. You know, we never ran it. So I don't know what's it doing for them, as it's, so I just wanted to make sure, you know, because I still think, you know, the garbage guys were looking too. I mean, if we can get it running, I mean, it replaces that super old monster down there, so.
They've done the starter, and that doesn't work.
See, they-
It won't stay idling. They took it to Okoboji for their conference, and it had no brake lights. The left turn signal is cracked and doesn't work. So, I mean, those are little things, I know, but the fact that it won't idle is a big issue.
Well, that's new, cause that was new. So that's why I was just trying to sort out what we needed to, obviously, we don't want to put money. And as far as the taillights go, I talked to my outfitter about it. He doesn't think that he took out a switch, but he's, he's afraid now, and he said he'll repair it for nothing, so. And again, fixing taillights will be nothing. That's a zero. That, that to me is not even an issue. I can fix a taillight, I'm sure.
Keep it around here, give her a flip the rest of it.
Right, you know, so.
I think so.
You know, I just needed to know, and I hadn't heard, and I just wanted to make sure, you know.
The one the garbage guys have runs, and it doesn't leave town, so it's fine.
Well, I wouldn't think this one will leave town either.
Well, if you, if you're having a different.
Um, I've had two more seek out for law enforcement jobs, and both of them had some significant issues in their past, so those were a no-go. Again, if anybody knows anybody who wants a police job, um, like I said, the Lorenz, I just got a text message from the guy in Lorenz, and he said he's just about ready to, to run the mile and a half. He thinks he can pass, and so, he'll be good to go, so we'll get one up in Lorenz, and then, I'm still, I gotta go, I'll be at the academy on the first Thursday in October with one potential hire to see how she does, but she has to get a waiver, um, on the physical agility side of it, so, um, to give her more time to get through, and I don't know how that's gonna go. Um, as some may have realized, that we had the train in the park was tipped over. My big comment on that is I really appreciate there were some high school boys that saw the post and heard about it, so they actually went out there and just flipped it back over. But it took several of them to upright it, so appreciate these high school boys that decided to go correct a problem. Um, what I can tell you right now is that actually, what most people don't realize, and apparently, nobody noticed it, it was actually there for three days before it was actually noticed by the mayor. So, um, we all missed it, I mean. And of course, Friday, I spent nine hours at the hospital, so I never went through the park once on Friday, so. Just so everybody's aware, so, um, we'll see. I don't know how much damage is really now done to it, um.
Not major.
Not gonna say, so.
Well-built.
And it is extremely heavy. It is extremely heavy. I mean, that's the reason why when I, when the boys came up to me and just said, Alex, we went out there and we flipped it back up, and I'm like, how in the heck? I'm like, I was-
How the hell did it get tipped over?
Well, that's, again, I even look at the physics of the whole thing. I have no idea. I haven't, I, at, what we found in evidence, I now have a suspicion, and I wish people would would not always blame the use of Pocahontas, because we don't have those problems with our kids. But that's what happened when it got posted and then suddenly taken down, cause I got tired of bashing also.
People were asking that.
Yeah. I got tired of bashing the kids, because I actually have a feeling that it may not have been kids. So, given the evidence that we've sent from them, so. Can't say, I don't know, could still be, but I don't know.
Alrighty, Kyle?
Or Donovan?
Hi, had a good conference. Thank you for letting me go. It was two hundred and fifty cities. All kinds of hoopla. I was in bed early every night. A lot of walking in the door. Other than that, these two did great. They held up fine. All our packets were in order. They did good.
Can you explain more now on the TIF?
Yes. So, what needs to happen now? We've had our consultation, so we need to find out how we wanna amend our documents from twenty twelve, and make sure the wording includes any big projects. And my one that I'm thinking is the pool heaters. So somehow, it has to say in there what we want to include. Right now, it just says basically, any part of Pocahontas can be covered. But it was ten years, as all the longer this document is valid. And with it being twelve, we're out of, we're out of savings.
So that was our tip?
Yeah.
What was, what was our last tip?
I have no idea.
I think some of it, Cody, was those green bins that go up.
Oh, help take them down?
Right, yeah.
Put them up.
Oh, oh, oh.
I thought we gave them a tax rebate.
Was that what it was?
I think that's what we-
I remember, I know that there was either some TIF money or something, was doing that when they put them up, but.
I think it was a rebate.
Okay, I remember.
So, Dean was talking, Prairie State, it's too late for that now, isn't it?
I don't think so.
You can still put that-
Because it's still included, yep. Because I need to get those, we need to get those three mailboxes out there. They're five free in peace. So.
A mailbox?
Cause you have to have, well-
Oh, the great big one.
To match what Phase One has, to make them look in-
See, did you talk to the post office, is that?
I did, and it's, it's approved by them.
But that's what they said you have to have.
Well, it's up to us. But if we want it to match Phase One, then that's what we do. There's a hundred and fourteen thousand in TIF to spend. The thing with TIF is, if we get this amended in October, let's say, best case, we have to have it spent by December one.
Well, the question I had for that guy, and maybe someone here knows, is can we use that for the water treatment plant, some of it? Cause it sound like when it was first off, and we could-
Yes, that is one of the options.
Sure that we can, we, we just have to put that in the-
When we amend it.
Yeah, use the money that's in the TIF.
Some of it, at least. I don't think you wanna drain it and use it all, but-
But they'll, the thing is, as long as there's improvement to our economic development, and the tax base is going up, there will still be money given to us in that little bucket. How it got to a hundred and fourteen and wasn't spent is the part we don't know. But we don't wanna have to give it back. That's the thing. That's the thing with TIF, is once you take it in, you've got to find the wording in your document to cover what projects you can use it on.
So I was talking to some from Lorenz, and they were saying the pool, the pool, uh, there's a lot of grants we can get for that.
There is, there is.
So, I don't know if them heaters come under them grants?
Probably, yeah. Cause it's a very, yeah.
Does grants, or whoever could-
Any of us, any of us.
Should research that and see what we can use.
That's an idea too.
Before, next year, we don't have any.
Yeah, maybe we could do half or something. You know, we've got options. The thing is, I don't wanna give it back.
Right.
If we don't have.
How, how, how much is the TIF?
One hundred and fourteen thousand.
And that had just gone up a lot recently?
No. The only thing I can track back is we get anywhere from twenty to forty thousand a year, and it's all based on taxes. So I don't know, somehow the audit, it accumulated, and now we have a hundred and fourteen, and they want it back.
Who wants it?
State.
State.
It'd be like that CDPG money we had to give back, you know, cause it wasn't used in the, in the type.
It's really, that's really not state money, was it?
Well, it's tax.
It was tax money that we should've, by what he says, it-
But it's-
It should've went to the school, but it, we, we took it as TIF money.
No, the school, the school gets theirs regardless. The school is separate. The school is wholly-
He just said if you had a, a TIF project, it comes on all. But you, you-
Instead of going to the city coffers, it goes to like this part, it goes to school.
Yeah.
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 So, I mean, it went, it all came to the city and not to the school and to the-
I think the school got their fair share. I think we got too much. Yeah, I think we got too much based on something. Because our taxes are not going up for the Phase One or Two yet, because a lot of those have the abatement, you know, that is used in this form.
And we're two years past already.
Yep.
Right, but it's the-
I mean, they will go-
Evaluation of your property went up, that's the reason that there's probably more money in there.
Yes, but our tax evaluation for the city went down, so that hurts us.
Rover, anything?
I'm good.
There, Cody?
I'm good. So let me find out on Amber's building out there.
It's happening this week.
Okay, just let her know.
I can, yeah, I can call her.
She's not very happy.
I meant to tell you that today. So it's Craig's gone, but-
Huh? Who's building?
Amber Wenzel's building behind Farming Home.
We're waiting on the electrician in West, in West Bend.
What's that?
Amber Wenzel's building behind Farming Home.
Yeah, the blue one, the blue and white one. They, she owns that, or her, I owned it. It's not part of Farming Home. And they had to split the electricity, because it was all wired at once. And they shut it off, and it hasn't been fixed yet, so she's not happy. Like, can't get the door open.
Yeah.
So the city shut off, or?
The city shut it off. Or Farming Home did, however you wanna say it.
So they, they, yeah.
So, what is the, uh?
We just need to get electricity in the building.
Get a meter.
Get a meter on it.
Yep.
Yep.
They got the trench. I don't know why they didn't finish it, or what they're-
Cause the guy from West Bend got called away or something, so it's, it involves more than what our guys can do.
Alright, get it fixed.
Yes, yes. I did give you an organizational chart. It was mentioned before, so I put it in there. Take a look if you want to change it.
I'm good.
Okay, I just gotta say, I was looking up Main Streets the other day, and there weren't any cars on Main Street. That's a beautiful little Main Street we got out here. I had to really mean that, because there are like buildings, not beautiful parks, a courthouse that looks pretty majestic at the end of Main Street. I, I was totally impressed when you really stopped and looked at that, and, so.
For our people that-
Like all the flags.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, I think it's pretty impressive. I, I thank the folks for doing that. Okay.
Salute. Thank you.